Good afternoon, saints. Welcome to Betty's 2:00 PM Zoom Room Study Session. Yes, a late afternoon virtual Bible study brought to you by Way of Healing Hands Ministry as a part of the Open Book Series. I'm Pastor Stevens, the facilitator of this study session, inviting you to open your hearts and your minds as I open the book. Let's get at it. How's everybody doing? I trust you guys are okay. We are, we're excited about being here today and we, we want to say that our, our main players on the field, there's Gladys, a Doc and Doc Gladys. There's Dorothy, she's here, and we're so glad about that. Clarence is gonna be, is out of town today, Doc, and, and Betty is involved in the, uh, the, uh, ministerial alliance thing that she does. It seems they're meeting this week or something, anyway. But, so which is gonna be the two of us. Deborah may, may be able to get in and then holler at us a little bit. She's excited about this study. I just talked to her this morning, so we're looking forward to seeing her. So it'll just be us, we'll, we'll wing it, we, we got it for them.
Okay, okay.
The good thing about virtual ministry is they can do it when they get a chance, so you remind them that it's in, it's in our, it's in our chat link, so they'll be able to do that. Uh, we've been, we've been, there she is now. We've been looking at, at, um, this Petron notion that jumps out at us in the second epistle, and I'm so excited. Hey, Deb, I'm so excited about the, uh, the discussion because all, all that we're learning is, is a doctrine, a heavy doctrine from the Petron, uh, mindset that helps us to work very seriously with how we understand ourselves. Now remember that the, the, the climate of the letter, the, the actual Sitzing Leben, where the letter sits into the life of the kingdom, is right, right at the, uh, 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 right at the edge of persecution. Now Nero has not yet come to power or to mission, so there, there is, there is not the, the really aggressive persecution that we're, that we're accustomed, that we're accustomed to thinking about when we talk about persecution, but what they're experiencing is, uh, anti-Christian sentiment from the regions in which they settled because they were run out of Rome and, and they were by and large more Gentile than Jews in conversion. So you got a lot of, they're in a Gentile region where Gentiles are still doing pagan, pagan religion, and these guys are showing up talking like they're Christian, okay? All right, so there's a lot of, a lot of stress there and a lot of, uh, accusations, a lot of false teachers trying to tackle the idea. And also remember now, this is late, uh, in the hundred, the first hundred years, the first century church, and, and the Christ has not come back. And you remember, Christ is supposed to come back, and they're going like, "Ah, where's this Christ?" And so they begin to challenge all of the teachings of the apostles regarding the Christ. And so Peter is writing to his folk who've been run out, and he's trying to stabilize them and wants them to understand how to, how to live and how to understand how to live in a world that's, that's, uh, giving them, uh, the, as we say around here, the business, okay? So he's opened up his discussion, uh, with, uh, the Christian call and election right after the salutation. So you remember how we started with verse three, his divine power and, uh, through knowledge of him and, and the one who's called is glory and is excellence, that's how he converts us, and we've done that, we've done that. So I won't repeat that, but that's three, five through seven. But I really want to focus your attention on this latter part of verse four, that we can become participants, that we may become participants of divine nature. We talked about that, that if we, that if we, uh, if we embrace the promises, there's the precious, the very great promises, uh, that, so that we can escape, uh, the, the passions of this world and we can become, uh, uh, participants in his divine nature. And we wrestled with that last week. How do we become participants with his divine, divine nature? Well, when we come into the knowledge of, of his glory, his dark side, his glory and, and his moral excellence, and we start living in that light, we are participating in him. And so because of that concept Peter lays on us, he says in verse five, then make for every, for this reason, you must make every effort to support your faith. And he gives, uh, from the faith, uh, all the way to love, about six or seven virtues. These are essential virtues that you add to your faith, you use to support your faith. Now Paul talks about that we are saved by grace through faith alone, and Peter's adding to that notion, "So since we are saved by faith through grace alone, add these things to your faith so that you may be divine participants in the nature of God, so that you can be identified, easily identified and excellently identified." And so we won't go back through those because we've discussed those, uh, but it's faith and excellence, knowledge, self-control, endurance, uh, godliness, mutual affection, and, uh, uh, with love, okay? Um, he says now, "If these things are added to your faith and forever increasing, always increasing, how do you, how do they increase? You're practicing them and you're getting stronger and better at it." Now one of the things that, that, uh, I really get frustrated with church folks about is they got this pray for everything mentality. You know, they've taken the language of, of the New Testament teaching on prayer and they've taken it far beyond where it was intended to be for, for the, the New Testament writers, okay? Uh, the notion of prayer is not to make things go away. The notion of prayer is not to rescue you from, uh, the wiles of the day and things that are happening in your life. Prayer is to keep you in connection and communion, okay, with the Father, communion with him because he's sovereign. And if something is happening in your life, Ms. Doc, if something happened in your life, you better bet God allowed it to happen. Good, bad, or indifferent, because nothing happens in God's world outside of, of God, his power. So he's allowed that to happen, and so our response to what's happening is that we recognize our God is sovereign. That means that he ain't gotta check with me. Would it be all right, uh, Casey, if I let this happen in your life? See, you don't get, you don't get that, you know? Let's talk about it, Stevens. I'm thinking about letting this go down, what you think? No, he moves unilaterally. That's what makes him sovereign. And if he moves that way, then that's the way he moves. Oh my goodness, I had, let me tell you something. When mom passed, that thing tore me up. Deborah, that thing, that thing had my brain messed up, and I, it was, it was this passage and the teachings of Peter to help me to understand that I, I, God ain't bargaining with me, you know, that there, there is something beyond my mother's life that I need to be dealing with because he has made his decision about my mother's life. Oh man, I got into that thing. But if these things are not, are not ours, ever increasing among us, he said, "That keeps us from, that keeps us from being ineffective," if they're increasing, if they are increasing. Now keep it, so we always can be effective in people's lives if we got these virtues working within us, okay? And it keeps us from being unfruitful in their knowledge by Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. How is that possible? Well, let's take, well, let's look at one of them, self-control. If self-control is a strong entity in your life and you're able to, to set the boundaries and not be caught up in the, in the, in the, in the, uh, uh, Deborah, with the mess of other folk, we don't get roped in, but we're able to stand on the principles of Christ, the more we're able to do that, the more we see him and the clearer we see him, because that's what Jesus had to do. That's what it was all about. So these essential virtues are not improvements on our personality, these essential virtues belong to Christ, and that's what's important. And they belong, and he belongs to God, so they're God's principles, they're God's virtues, and we're reaching towards them. So we gotta ever be increasing, ever reaching, ever striving, every opportunity, that's our chance to participate in the divine nature of God. And so we gotta think like that, instead of, you know, what people tend to do in church, uh, she got a bad attitude, "I ain't fooling with her, I ain't fooling with her." And you'll go down the other side of the church, holy, you take your holy self down the other side of the church and out the church and into the parking lot, hello somebody, and get in your car and say hallelujah because you avoided that old woman. That's not Christianity, baby. You can't, you can't grow in these, these essential virtues, cannot grow without the challenge of growth, you know? That's one thing you want to learn, okay? Now, anyone who lacks these virtues, look at verse nine, anyone who lacks these, they become blind, and, and, and the newer Bible standard says suffering from eye disease. Other translation would say nearsighted and blind. That's like blind in one eye, Casey, eye the other, and we're speaking spiritually. You just, you know, people, you ever been around somebody, every time something go down, they just snap? "She make me sick, she that's trapped." You don't have a spiritual bone in your body and you can't see. You know, what if she making you sick is what God wanted to do for your day, make you sick this day, allow you to be sick this day, so you can discover how little long suffering you have, how little patience you have with other people. You see, if we're not engaging in the body and we're not dealing with those issues, we don't know ourselves, we can't come to know Jesus, okay? It's, that's the way that works. So he's saying if, if you, if these things are not increasing, then you, you, you're subject to forget the cleansing of your past sins. In other words, you act like you used to act. "You don't want none of my smoke, you don't want none of this, I got some of all that right there." You ever hear them talk like that, Doc? Them pistol-packing saints, they bring, they bring their pistols in church. And somebody say something about, uh, somebody to them, "Oh, you're this, oh, land this, oh, you, you don't want me to go to my car, do you? I tell you what, you step outside." You know, I mean, I've heard people, church folk, sanctified choir members, leading songs, will invite you out back in a minute. Oh, sometimes you can get nearsighted and blind and forget, you, forget you've been transformed and forget you've been changed and just snap. Happened to me one time, yes it did. I invited the deacon down to step, I tell you what, you come down here, you, you come down here and say that to my face, I sure did it. And I was sitting there going, you know, I don't think I done messed up. So yes, you gotta practice, and you gotta allow these principles to become significant, these essential virtues to become significant in your life. Read over your list and always pay attention to that list, and, and when you have situations that come into your life, think for a minute now, I bet you this situation is give me an opportunity to exercise one of them virtues. Give me a chance to participate in the divine nature of God. You better bet it's there, but you don't sit there and go, "I ain't participating in what I'm finna do." You know, can't do it. All right, look at verse 10 now. "Therefore, brothers and sisters, be all the more eager to confirm your call and your election, for if you do this, you will never stumble." See, I had a trip, I had a, a problem with that confirming your call and election. I didn't know what that meant, but I checked it out, and, and here's the deal. It's the notion of understanding, understanding, uh, that you're really in there, that you're really doing the thing, that you're really committed to it. It, it, the Greek says to make for oneself sure, you know, and the way you do that is check the last time you operated in the virtues. That lets you know right there. I got no help here, I say, "Don't nobody want to deal with the truth." Hey, Deb, nobody want to remember that. Just remember when you got to the cash register and she cheated you out that quarter. You let them have it. Help me somebody, I was talking to one of my, one of my pastor friends, he said, I was telling him about what happened to me, and he says, "Yeah, I got sent to the wrong room one day, going to the hotel and went in the room and walked in on some people, and it was embarrassing for all of them. I went down to that, 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 that lobby, I went down and I looked at him, I said, 'You did? Really, pastor?' See, that's the truth of the matter, see, that's the truth of the matter. If you want to confirm, you then you check your discipline. It's like checking your oil. You ain't got no oil light to come on, nothing like that, but you need to know, you know, you know what I'm saying? You need to measure yourself, and the way you do it is constantly, constantly confirming these principles at work in your life. And if you don't see them at work in your life, what'd they tell you? What'd they tell you all the time? Maybe, number one, you avoiding people. That could be easier than that. You can avoid people, but you can't be saved and avoid people, I'm sorry. That's how you know you saved. Salvation is about, it's a corporate experience. We have our private teachings and meditation, but we have to go to the body. So you gotta live in the body. This is a corporate experience to be saved, okay? So you're in the body, now in the body, you gotta encounter all kinds of personalities, and we don't judge people by their personalities, by their character. "Oh, she ain't nothing but a liar, I don't fool with her, she ain't nothing but a liar." Well, what, what, what is it about you so good you can't fool with somebody you think is a liar? How can they come to know the truth? You don't want to help? You don't want to do the ministry at the body? I ain't got no help here, though. That ain't none of my job. Yes, it is. We all contribute in the body of Christ, our gifts, our insight. Now you're gonna get this to go blow your mind, because towards the end of this, Paul says, but Peter says, uh, he thinks, now he, he, but he says openly that Christ has showed him he'd be dead soon. We talked about that, that he was gonna die soon, and we think this has to do with his age, he's gotten old, you know how we do, you know, you know, "My days ain't long right here." You know, we go talking like that. That's kind of like where he at, right? And so, um, he says, "As long as I'm here, I'm gonna remind you of those things you know, that you already know. I'm gonna constantly remind you of those things until I'm no longer able to do that." Now that's, that's the, that's the challenge of living in the body. People gotta remind you, we got, even though we know, we, he says, "I'm gonna remind you. I think it's right as long as I am in the body to refresh your memory." Verse 12, "I intend to keep on reminding you of these things," talking about those virtues, "though you know them already, and you're established in the truth that has come to you, I'm gonna keep reminding you." Okay? He says, "As long as I'm in the body, long as I'm in the body, I'm gonna refresh your memory." Dorothy's laptop did it too again, she'll be back in a minute. "Since I know that my devil comes soon," he says at 14, "uh, uh, and the Lord, I, I will, I will make every effort so that after my departure, you may be able to, to at any time recall these things." So notice how focused he is on the essential virtues that he's saying that we need to use to support our faith. So every day you get a chance, when you, when you're doing your reading and doing your study, go, go back to verse five of 2 Peter, uh, uh, chapter one, and just read from five to eight, just remind yourself, and, and use that as a way of confirming, uh, uh, your faith and your commitment. Make sure that you are actually living that way, because there's sometimes, you know, we can get smart and we start thinking on our own, you know? All right? Um, now the next section in, in, in the letter is at verse 16. Here at 16, um, Peter is suggesting, I mean, it's so interesting too, because after he talks about the need for reminders, he puts on, he puts, uh, starts the next section with the word "for." Remember, whenever there's a word "for" in the newer Bible standard, whenever there's a word "for," that means that this, this idea is connected to the previous idea, okay? So he's saying, "We're gonna keep reminding you, okay, of the principles." So Paul, we, we didn't follow, we did not follow cleverly devised myths when we made known to you, verse 16, uh, uh, Mr. Doc, uh, 116, "When we made known to you the power and the coming of our Lord Jesus Christ. But we had been eyewitnesses of his majesty, for he received, he received honor and glory from God the Father, when that voice was conveyed to him by the majestic glory saying, 'This is my son, my beloved, with whom I'm well pleased.'" We ourselves heard this voice come from heaven while we were with him on the holy mountain. So we have the prophetic message more fully confirmed. "You will do well to be attentive to this as to a lamp shining in a dark place until the day dawns and the morning star rises in your hearts. First of all, you must understand this, that no prophecy of scripture is a matter of one's own interpretation, because no prophecy ever came by human will, but men and women moved by the Holy Spirit spoke from God." All right, this is a good, this is a good section. I love this particular, uh, parable for lots of reasons, but we'll, we'll, we'll come to it. Now, Peter links himself in the discussion. Notice he says, "For we," and he's talking about, uh, uh, the apostles. This is important, see, one of the things that, that people mess up real bad is they don't understand, Jesus came and chose 12 apostles and left these apostles to carry the ministry until he returns. So everything that Jesus taught and everything that Jesus did, they, they were eyewitnesses to it, and their understanding of it is how we understand what the ministry of Jesus was about, okay? So it's important, like when you're reading the Gospels, Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John, you know, preachers will read and they'll just start reading what Jesus said, you need to know why the writer is saying that, from what point, what, what vantage point is he saying that? What was going on that Mark said this? Because Mark has given us his testimony. We, we need to understand from that perspective, and see, that's where, that's where, uh, the preacher comes in. He's supposed to help you understand that, and if he doesn't understand it, like I listened to a preacher a while back, just recently, and he came up on a parable, and he was preaching that parable, and he preached that parable as if it actually happened, as if it was a story that actually happened. That's not what a parable is. Jesus told a parable to, to, to argue a point that he made, and that's like, like when Deborah, when we talk, we say, "For example," and then you say something, you know, "The rabbit jumped out the tree." I mean, ain't nobody talking about no rabbits jumping out the tree, we talking about what it meant when the rabbit jumped out the tree, okay? And, and so you gotta understand that. So I love reading this, this, this Petron notion, because remember now, Peter, he messed up real bad. He, 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 like, he ain't know Jesus at the critical hour, and, and then Jesus told me he was gonna do it and that the rest of the disciples gonna fall away with him. Said, "But when you come back, I need you to strengthen the brotherhood." So now look, Peter is on, he's on the job, all right? Now he said, "Now, we didn't make this stuff up, this, uh, about Jesus. Remember what I told you? The, the, uh, incarnation, the resurrection, and the second advent. Those are the three elements that the false teachers just get, 'Ah, ah, you say they were coming back, man, come back.' He didn't come back, he probably didn't come in the beginning." Okay, you lied, all y'all liars. And that's pretty much the way that the false teachers were teaching it, and they started making claims of knowing God apart from Jesus, okay? And so that's what's going on. So this is why Peter is making, that's why he sounds like he's in the middle of an argument, because he is. He said, "We, we did not follow cleverly devised myths when we, when we made known to you the power and coming of our Lord Jesus Christ, but we had been eyewitnesses of this, uh, of his majesty." Okay, now what does it mean by divine myths? The messages, the, the mysterious things that they witnessed and they saw, and, you know, they were telling people about it, and they were like, "Yeah, right, mm-hmm." Say they wasn't turning water, say we turning water away, you say, "What you there?" You know, it's that kind of thing. So, so here he points to a very important time, uh, in the life of Jesus, and you probably remember, it's the Mount of Transfiguration, when Jesus took three boys, Peter, James, and John, and went to the mount, Mount Hone, okay? And while he was up there, some went down and blowed their mind, okay? They got up there and Moses was there, and Elijah was there, and they were standing next to Jesus. And then what went down after that, they just took him out because, because Jesus, Moses was shining all bright and Elijah was shining all bright, you know, Moses was the covenant, the first covenant, you know, and Elijah was said to be the one who would come at the end of time. But then Jesus was standing there, he was brighter than, he was brighter than any of them. And, and Peter, James, and John was like, "Did you see that?" And they were like, "Oh my God." And so Peter said, "Now, you know what, we need to build a tabernacle here, we, we, we need to, we need to make, we need to make a sign here so folk can know." And by the time he said that, a cloud came over, and they heard this voice, and it was God, and God declared his glory and his majesty. We'll talk about that in a minute. Said, "This is my son, I love him, and he's beloved." Now here's the kick, here's the kick. When, when they got over the experience, they were coming down the mountain, they were towed. See, if that been the three of us, I hadn't care one of y'all up, sure. Deborah, Deborah probably be the one to fight. Had to care one of y'all back then, right? But on the way down, verse nine, 17 now, Jesus says, Matthew 17, now, note that in your notes, Matthew 17, now. "Jesus says, 'Do not tell anybody about anything you experienced on this mountain until after I've been raised from the dead.'" That's important, okay? Do not tell anyone. "And as they were coming down from the mountain, James, Jesus commanded them, saying, 'Tell no one the vision until the Son of Man is raised from the dead.'" Okay? So this is important, this, this section is really important, because Peter's saying, hold up, you know, in the mission, and see, Jesus knew that that would be difficult times believing, uh, the, the church moving forward after he's gone back to be with the Father. Excuse me, he knew that that would be rough times getting people to believe, but he also knew that this particular testimony right here would blow their minds, because these three guys actually witnessed this, and so this is an eyewitness of Christ's glory, right? Well, um, verse 17, "For he received honor and glory from God the Father, when that voice was conveyed to him by the majestic glory, saying, 'This is my son, beloved, with whom I'm well pleased.'" Now he says there in, 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 in the text there, that God gave him, the Father gave him, uh, honor and glory. And the notice, whenever you're reading the New Testament, and there, there are words like that, honor and, that's, that's two different experiences that you really need to pay close attention to, okay? The honor that Jesus received was this public announcement of his sonship. "This is my beloved son, this is mine, this my boy." My mother used to say that. I used to love it, my mama say that, before we called her, tried to talk about me. She said, "You know that my boy does, that's mine you talking about, you know that he does? That's my son. You don't call me talking about my son, that's my son." She would like that about both me and Roger, that's all. We used to love that, my mama was, my mama was snapping a minute, say something, she like, she's snapping a bit. Anyway, I'm sorry, I went off, I'm sorry. He said, "God says, 'This is my son,' that's the honor." Okay? And the glory is the Transfiguration, that, 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 that he was, he was, in other words, he was distinguished superior to Moses, who was the law giver, and Elijah, who was the prophet that was designated to come and, and tell the world that the world was ending, that this, this, this fellow is more important than anybody, okay? In your, in your history with me. And that becomes a really important thing, because the glory, the glorious splendor of the Son was made clear. So now what is Peter, why is Peter telling them this? Because these people are trying to say that the incarnation, the word was with God and God be, and God became the flesh, Jesus became, the, the word became flesh and came down and dwelt among them, that ain't happened. Then they're trying to say that the, uh, um, uh, the experience of, of, what was the other one? Transfiguration, that ain't happened, and the promise to come back. He ain't come back, he ain't back, is he? So see, those things are there, and so he's trying to remind them, "You stay with the things you've been taught from the beginning. Stay with what you, what the apostles taught you. We didn't make those stories up. What we told you, it was real. The blind man received this sign, it was real. Jesus came walking on the water, we saw that, and more importantly, the, the eyewitness account where the Father said, we heard God say this." And that, that was, that was the power of the statement, okay? Look at verse 18, "We ourselves heard this voice come from heaven while we were with him on the holy mountain." That's Mount Heron, Herman, Mount Herman, and what made it, well, well, made it holy was the Transfiguration, okay? Now I think it, I think it's important that we, that we understand now the inner circle. All of the, all of the disciples, all the apostles at that time did not see that experience, only Peter, James, and John, okay? And now the real, the real issue becomes now is, is not And now the real, the real issue becomes now is, is not only did, did uh, uh, everybody, they told it to have to believe it. But these remaining apostles had to believe it as well. So we have, we have a, a, um, we got a, a story here uh, that, uh, that rings. In the ears of, of the disciples, the apostles, and in the people. And that's, that's where our faith begins. Do we actually believe the testimony of the apostles? We are apostolic believers. And this is the hard part for church folk. See, we want, we want to go with the Jesus, you know, we, and we, he turned water into wine and, and he made the lane new walk. You know, and, and it's like, we saw that. You didn't see none of that. You don't know, what, what we have is the testimony of the apostles. And we believe the apostles in what they saw. And our experience of Jesus Christ is as a risen Lord. And Paul is very clear on that and Peter is very clear on that. But the testimony of the saints, that's the basis for our faith. And if we can understand that and learn that and hold on to that, then our, our, our movement forward makes good sense. But if we try to identify with Jesus, uh, uh, and, and, and when he fed the five thousand. John said he fed the five thousand. Matthew said he fed the five thousand. Mark and Luke said he fed the five thousand. That's, that's what I testified. So our testimony is based on the confession of the apostles. So we have to believe in the apostolic testimony like, like, like. The Israelites had to believe in the prophetic testimony. Are you hearing me? This is, this is really important now. When the people heard the prophets speak, that's how they knew God. And they believed that. They believe what the prophet said, they believed it until they stopped believing. Okay, until, until they started being, uh, not listening, until they started ignoring. Okay, and this, this is the position, this is why the apostles, this is why Jesus came. To confirm what the prophets had been saying. So look at verse nineteen. So we have the prophetic message more fully confirmed. Verse nineteen. This is where the church really gets in trouble. Cuz you go in church on Sunday morning. And they want to give you the broken prophetic message of the prophets. And try to tell you that through that broken message, you can know God. Not so. You can know of him. Remember now, the prophets, when they prophesied. They gave you what Jesus said to them. Okay, and so the people believed the word of the prophet. With the apostolic age where we are now, we are believing the words of Jesus Christ. Given to the apostles. And that's important. So what we've done is we got, we, we've got preachers who go in, they, they don't call themselves Reverend or, or, uh, uh, they call themselves, I'm Apostle Jennings. You know, they're not made up, so they're, they're, they're self-named, self-appointed prophet. They the prophet, uh, Jennings. Mm-hmm, I'm the prophet Jennings, mm-hmm. You know, it's like, what do you mean? You, you, you the apostle? We got, we got apostles, we got prophets, we got them all. And really and truly, we're just hearing the, the apostles teachings, apostolic teachings. So our faith is based on the confession of the apostles regarding this Christ. We believe that. Okay? One of the things I, I grew up with, and I'll, I'll share this with you guys, is I grew up Methodist. And so every morning, every Sunday morning. Here's how you go to church. What do we believe? I believe in God the Father Almighty, the maker of heaven and earth. And in Jesus Christ his holy son, our Lord, who was conceived by the Holy Spirit. Born of the Virgin Mary, suffered on the Pontus' pile, was crucified, then buried on the thirtieth. Okay, that's what we call the Apostles Creed. That's interesting. I didn't even understand it until I went to school. I went, oh, oh! At one of the, the general church, uh, meetings, uh, they decide, what do we believe as followers of, as apostles, followers of the apostles? The Apostles Creed. And their commitment was to the ministry of Jesus Christ. Okay, so now what we have done. What we have done is we have restructured everything so that Reverend Brown down the street is Apostle Brown. And, uh, Sister Mabel over here, she prophets, she, she prophets Jennings. See, cuz we just, we just using that as a office. But as Christians, the apostolic confession is valuable. Listen to what Peter says. He says, look at nineteen. So we have the prophetic message more fully confirmed from the, the apostles statement. We didn't make it up. We saw, we witnessed this. So we have a clearer picture now. We, we got the story. You will do well to be attentive, Peter says, to this, this, this complete version. As, as, as to a lamp shining in a dark place. This is the way you should live. According to the testimony of the apostles about Jesus Christ. As a, like a lamp. Shine, you know, the, the Pentecostal people would say this. He's a light unto my pathway and a lamp unto my feet. Okay, and what they were talking about was Jesus. But our Jesus is through the apostles. You see, we, we, we act like we knew Jesus. We knew as little of Jesus as we knew of, as we know of God. We. You know, we've not seen God, okay? And we believe the testimony of Jesus regarding God. And now we have to believe the testimony of the apostles regarding Jesus' testimony of God. He said, she said, that's what we had. And we stupid enough to believe it. Every, every word, every dot, every tittle, every jot, as they say in the New Testament. Okay, that's, that's what we've got to embrace. And if we embrace that, then we begin to understand it's important that we stay true to it. And not let other people come in introducing other things to us. That's what, that's why, uh, Peter is talking this way. Remember now, we got the full statement from the apostles because they ran with Jesus. Now who else, who gonna come in and tell you something that ain't been nowhere near Jesus? Ain't, ain't nobody got nothing to tell me about Jesus. I know what I need to know about Jesus. From who? The ones that ran with him. So I'm gonna listen to Paul and his understanding of, cuz he meant, you know, Paul met him on the Massacre Road. Would you there knock them off his horse and set him straight, okay? So I'm gonna listen to Paul, okay, cuz he got him on the risen end, okay? He knows how to serve the risen Lord. And I'm gonna listen to these, these, these other boys cuz they went with, they ran with him. Now why I'm gonna listen to Uncle Bubba down the street talking about, I don't believe that's what God meant. Uncle Bubba sit down somewhere. Gee, they may sit down. Ain't nobody ask you that. You don't know what you're talking about. That's how, that's why it's important that we understand apostolic teachings. What, what, what does scripture teach us? Okay, what did the boys who ran, what they, what did they say about Jesus? That's what's important. How am I doing? Doing alright and good. Deborah, you getting me? You following me? Alright, alright. He said, now he said, you would do well, and I love, this is a warning. Nineteen B, you would do well to be attentive to this. And this is a reference to the full confirmed uh, testimony of the apostles regarding Jesus Christ. God said to these three boys, this is my son. I'm pleased with him. And Mark, when he tells the story, he said, obey him, obey him. Gee, they got, you do what Jesus take you to do. So now I'm through. I, I, I ain't got nothing to do. I, I'm through. Ain't got nothing to do with these crazy people who got all this stuff. Well, you know, there's a new prophetic age now. And God is speaking to, 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 to men and women in a way he never spoke to Jesus. You better go sit down somewhere. The final word of God to God's people is in Christ Jesus. And Peter's trying to make that very, very clear. First of all, he said in twenty. All of you must understand this. Now this is an important statement. Y'all listen to this. First of all, all of you must understand this, that no prophecy of scripture is a matter of one's own. Interpretation. Let's get that phrase down. Uh, in other translations, they would say, there is no such thing as private impartations. Now let me explain it to you. I'm sitting on my living room, Miss Doctor. And I'm watching Law and Order. Special edition. And I'm watching my Law and Order and, and all of a sudden a boy spoke to me. And I, I looked around, I ain't know where, I, I, you know, but it was God. He spoke to me. And God told me to tell the people Sunday morning. And he let, I, I had to get up and write it down. And I, one, two, three, four, five. I wrote it down. That's what God told me to tell you. Peter says, that man is a liar. Now I get in trouble with preachers with this because I enjoy telling them, I enjoy telling them this to their face. There is no private importation. God is not speaking to your spirit and telling your spirit nothing. See, that's what the false teachers was telling the Petron community. You know, God, God, God told us what was going on. We know God. We run with God. And Peter said, uh-uh. There are no, no private interpretation. No man gets an interpretation of scripture and prophecy on his own. And see, that's consistent with what he's been saying. We listen to Jesus. So you ain't gotta make up no prophecy. You ain't gotta make up no statements. You ain't gotta teach nobody nothing. You teach Christ. Because that's the final word of God in Christ Jesus. There are no private matters of one's own interpretation. That you got Reverend Jennings to get, God ain't told Reverend Jennings to tell nobody nothing. Well, God told Reverend Jennings to tell somebody what Jesus said. And if I can't find it in Jesus, I don't wanna have it from Reverend Jennings. And y'all hear Stevens? Paul said to the Galatians, when he went back into the, uh, to the Galatian era region, he says. Y'all, y'all, it's as if y'all have heard another gospel. If any man comes in here and preaches the gospel other than the gospel I've already preached to you, let him be anathema. In the Greek that means, now I'm gonna say it, in the, in the Greek that means, let him be damned. Let him go to hell. The message of the gospel is set. And this is what God wants his people to hear. And when Jesus come back, it's the basis of what Jesus taught, that the world will be assessed. So them preachers that reading Ezekiel, three things that God wants you to know about Ezekiel, about what did? And he go tell, first thing Ezekiel wants you to do is Ezekiel don't even know salvation. Ezekiel has done his task and he sits, he rests, waiting on the Christ and the Christ redeemed crowd to show up. So we can crown him Lord. There is, that they have no, they have no, you notice what Peter says, they had a broken message. So we have the prophetic message more fully confirmed. Cuz they only knew what God said to them. But Jesus knew the whole thing. That's important. Okay, now that's kind, that's kind of hard sometimes to get church folks to get. Because we've been taught, every, you know, every preacher saying, the Lord spoke to me and said, now you stop lying. I get so frustrated when they do that. Now you got these people thinking, what you finna say now? God told you. And you got people in the house, they're so, they're of weaker consciousness that they'll buy into that and believe that. And you'll have, you, you're leading people and the blood is on your hands when you do that. But it's also on the ear of the people who were, can hear, ye shall know the truth and the truth shall set you free. And if you're not familiar with the Christ, then you need to ask of Christ. You need to be where Christ is taught so you can know and hear. Okay, so you won't be blind in this sight. You think, oh, you gotta do is be saved and wait on Jesus. You standing at ticket, at the station with your ticket in your hand. You can cuss everybody out till Jesus get there and get your ticket. Ain't got no help here. Tell nobody wanna laugh with Stevens, but. Miss Donna laughing, but Deborah gonna laugh with me. Miss Donna laugh with me. That, that'd be serious. That'd be trying to get her notes together. She my girl. I love Bubba. Okay, look at this, twenty-one. That no prophecy of scripture is a matter of one's own interpretation because no prophecy ever came by human will. But men and women moved by the Holy Spirit spoke from God. He's talking about the apostolic tradition. Okay, he not talking about in the future. That way preacher, God spoke to me. See, you, you quit lying. He ain't spoke to you. So how'd you get that message you got there? You made it up. You sat down and it made good sense to you. And so you made it up. And then you said, God told you. Come on now, don't lie to the people. I heard a preacher say last night, and I will not lie to your bishop, he said these words out loud. And I want you to hear this. He says, that the, in the matter of biblical interpretation, how to interpret scripture. He says, you can't go by what's written. You gotta know what God meant when he wrote it. Okay, I read, I said, I oughta get this one back. Let me ask you a question. Who know what God meant? When he wrote what he wrote. First of all, God ain't wrote nothing. That wasn't God writing it. That was, that was Matthew, Mark, and Luke. That was the writers writing it, inspired by the, the Holy Ghost. Now, what is it in scripture that you know God meant that scripture ain't saying? You see, he, what he's doing is, he's proclaiming what? That he has special knowledge of what God thinks and what God feels that nobody else has. But Peter says, ain't no such animal. At verse twenty, he said, first of all, you must understand this. No prophecy of scripture is a matter of one's own interpretation. You don't get to look at the thing and make it up. Well, I guess what he means, well, see, when I get, when I read it, what I get out of it. Ain't nobody ask you what you got out of it. If you don't know what Mark is saying, sit down. There's somebody in the body that does. Okay, in the body of Christ. And when God called me to preach, and I knew I was called to preach, I knew, look. I went to study scripture so that I could be, uh, I could, I could share in the body of Christ. I, I could've stayed, I, I had a bachelor's degree. I could've stayed in Maken and just, and just talk smart talk and bat, dazzle dazzle people. But I knew I didn't understand scripture very well. So I wanted to know more about scripture. And it's available for you to learn. And if you're called, then you need to learn. If you're not gonna, if you're not gonna do the work to learn, then you need to sit down. Cuz you just can't shoot from the hip. That's why in the body, notice what Paul says in Ephesians, that he gave some teachers, some gifts in the body. There's somebody in the body that can do the work. If you would allow, when you don't know. When you don't know, stop acting like you do. And sit down and let the person, God has given knowledge and insight to some of his people. And that's how the body works so that everybody can learn and grow together. That's how the body works. I ain't got no help up here. I got any help in here? I got help, alright. Deborah wrote, Deborah write her note, but she waved her head and let me know she. That'd be serious, you hear me? Okay, so. We've got a full, I've got an interesting picture now. When we're looking at the eyewitness exam, uh, eyewitness testimony that confirms apostolic confession. And the focal point is the Mount of Transfiguration, but it's expansive. The only way we know that Jesus walked on the water is what? The writers told us. None of us saw that. You know, you know, stop getting it like, God ain't showed you nothing. Stop to that lot. Stop standing there, put up and say, God, he showed it. No, he didn't. God was not, that, see how that moves outside of scripture? God ain't, why would God show you something that Jesus can't tell you about? That, that makes sense. As a preacher in Atlanta said that, um, he was gonna plant marijuana. In the back of the church. To get the young people to come in, you know, and, and get, get the young people back in the church. And folks have to go, amen, amen. What you amenin' about? What, what are you talking about? A mood altering drug? A mood altering drug? Used, doing in worship, really? Come on, come on now. The church gonna sell mood altering drugs, harvest mood altering drugs. Where you, look in, where did Jesus say that at? See the, see the test you got? What chapter, what verse did Jesus say that? And if you can't get a chapter and a verse, then you know what to do, don't you? Run on, see what the ear gonna be. Cause somebody here waiting for you. Well, Deborah had to run, and we, we knew that, I meant to announce that, but anyway, here we go. We, we pretty much, I think, we'll, we'll stop there since we missing our, uh, our, our main team members, we, we, we missing our, uh, uh, Roma Road Dog, uh, Clarence. So we'll, we'll, uh, hold up and, we know, we don't know where Betty is, Lord help us, we waiting on Betty, we been waiting on Betty so long. So long, we ain't even know for it no more. But anyway, Daddy, it was good to share with you, okay? So you be mindful now, this is a, this is a great time, uh, to be learning how to understand. And I want you to hear that, so when you, when you go to worship, you listen carefully what you being preached, what's being preached to you. Listen carefully, and always listen for Jesus. And if you don't hear no Jesus, you might wanna consider wait, what you doing?
Yeah, for sure.
For sure, good then, I'm glad to hear that. You take care of yourself now, and we'll see you, uh, next time out. I'm hoping we'll, I'm hoping we'll, I hope we'll be able to get, get it going on, like we need to get it going on, um.
I'm, I'm loving this teaching.
Well, good, I'm glad.
I really am.
I'm glad to hear it.
I've learned so much, sometime I'm attempting to say something and I remember, oh, I ain't supposed to say that, I'm not supposed to do that.
Don't you go up there, folk church, and the churches show that.
I said, oh, Lord, isn't it hard?
You just, you share, you share all the way, uh, uh, you know, you share it around, you, you, don't, don't raise your hand in the middle of Bible study, you'll get in trouble.
I know, I know. But if you could, Let me tell you, they said, and this is how it is, and this is it, and then in my head from the kitchen, I'm like, mm-mm. And I'm like, oh, no. That's not right.
Well, you know, I, I, I have to tell you, see, I don't wanna say this in front of you, but you're supposed to contend for the faith. If you think you can be a help, be a help, but don't tell Betty I said it, cause Betty like to tell folk churches.
No, I don't, I don't.
Nah, no, girl, but, but anytime you think you can say something that could give somebody a chance to think about it, you do that, you feel free to do that. Yeah, but don't, don't do what Betty do now. Go in there, ask the pastor, go in there, ask the pastor questions, she know you don't know that ass to it. Anyway,
Let me tell you, I've learned a lot, let me tell you, oh, Lord.
I'm glad, baby.
Sometimes I say, oh, Lord, that's me.
That's how you, that's how you, 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 uh, confirm your faith, by recognizing and growing, keep growing.
Exactly, exactly, I'm like, woo, Lord, am I so out of place?
You're not out of place, you're learning where place is.
Yeah, I know, but I mean that I've been out for, you know, so long, and then I wouldn't have never learnt this happen, you know.
Yeah, well, well, think of, think of it this way, I like saying this to people, think of it this way, for whatever reason, God did not want you to close your eyes not knowing the truth.
Exactly, exactly.
So this is your hour to celebrate, this is, this is a great time in your life, cause he wanted you to know. So he, he arranged the circumstances of your life, so that boom, we can share together. That ain't, that ain't nothing but the Lord, ain't that good news?
It is the Lord, it is the Lord, can't nobody be nobody but him. To get me to sit down and listen, but I've been like in Bible study almost ever since, I was in it before I came here, moved back to Georgia. And then when they had the Bible study at, uh, Betty started at Gatwick over there, where she live. I was living in one, in one of Robbins at the time, and I used to come on Thursdays to the Bible study.
Is that right?
And I continued until it wasn't there anymore, you know? And then when she started with you, I jumped on that too, and so, you know. I enjoyed the word of God, and I always wanna know that, I say, if I ever got a, a, a degree, it would be in theology.
Yes, it would, yes, it would, sit down and hear. Say, I know you do. I'm glad to hear you say that.
Yeah, that's true, that's the only, the, the, the reading, I don't really like reading, but I like to read in the word of God.
Amen.
Somebody teaching it and that I can understand it, you know?
God bless your heart, baby. You got your testimony in you, girl. Thank you, I appreciate that. What a blessing, what a, thank you for sharing that with me, that blesses my heart, really it does. All right then, girl. All right, I gotta roll, you take care, you'll be good now, we love you.
All right, all right.
Well, it seems our time in the Zoom room has come and gone. We look forward to seeing you again on next Wednesday at two P M. here in Betty's Zoom room. Would you consider subscribing to our YouTube channel? And if you do, be sure and ring the bell, so that the notifications can go out every time we open the book. God bless your hearts, and we'll see you when we see you.